Circuits.
There is.
Circuits.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the slide. Led by Deputy Mayor.
My pleasure, ladies and agents, to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which we stand. When location under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna get a chat up. Um, Jeff, uh, for the parade. Is that why you're here tonight?
You know, I came because I told you I'd be here to give it to you.
Thank you, sir.
Do well.
Grass.
Yeah.
I was pretty close, sound like. There's chaos. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting. Just a reminder, if there's an emergency, we have to get out the rear of the building. Go to your vehicles, please sit on vehicles, so directed by emergency service personnel. Um, just before we get started, for those that. I think it was. The afternoon meeting is when Dennis Smith passed.
Yeah, of course.
Well, yeah, just a very important person within this organization, probably. Ninety percent of what we've done over the last twenty years, he has fingerprints all over some. Yeah. You think about people who made a difference in this community, Dennis is somebody that absolutely. Okay, go as quick.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, requesting approval for the board meeting minutes of June ninth, as amended with the corrections that were provided.
So, any changes, any additions, okay?
Aye.
All right.
Good evening, everybody.
He can do the bills.
Hey. Yay, I'm here. Period of June ninth through the twenty-third of June, the bill's code one million, six thirty-eight, six sixty-one, fifty-two. Five largest bills, Patrick Ambulance are first half of the budget, three hundred thousand dollars. New York State Employee Health Health Insurance. Premiums two-two-four, eight forty, fifty-four. Thomas Davelli's contract working on the sewer project phase two, two seventeen, nine fifteen, sixty-five. And H two M for, uh. Phase two sewer and plant expansion. One fifty-nine, three sixty, three oh eight, and Devo was the new meter that we're putting around the village, eighty-one thousand. Three seventy-five, twenty-five, for a total of nine hundred eighty-three thousand, four ninety-four, fifty-two. If I could have a call.
Questions, questions, delusions, motion.
Motion to accept.
I'll second that in favor.
Aye. And one other item. And it's a small item, request approval to authorize an additional. One hundred dollars in expenditure to direct total amount authorized by resolution one eighty-four. Dash two oh two-two. Retaining H two M architects and engineers for the preparation of and payment for plans. For the wastewater treatment plant for a total amount of four hundred. Eighty-four thousand, one hundred dollars. There's one hundred and zero cents.
If I can have a motion.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Notices hereby given that a public hearing will be held on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, six P M in the municipal building, fourteen Baker Street, Patchogue, New York. One one seven seven two by the village board trustees of the incorporated village of Pata. To amend section four thirty-five dash thirty. Point two of the village code to apply rooftop dining regulations to the H T L Hotel District. By proposal of the law, a copy of which is on file at the office of the village clerk. At said public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be heard.
Good evening, Mayor, members of board trustees, members of the public, this is, um. Pointed out, uh, that this proposal tell them in the hotel district, which was the first application of this section. To require or or allow a rooftop restaurant. Um, and bar, which inevitably from experience would require some kind of music accommodation. Um, you'll recall that we passed a rooftop, uh, dining permission in the D three district under four thirty-five eighty-one dash two. And it was restricted strictly to the D three, uh, downtown district. In review of the regulations that were in the D three district, we only have one permitted location that has it. And just coincidentally is actually moving towards enclosure, not, uh, not being open. Um, the regulations were there, have generated no complaints and have and have worked. So the proposal is to take that same regulation essentially. And move it without any substantive changes to make it applicable to the hotel zone. Um, people inevitably ask, what was the edit? The edit was the proximity to certain other zones because of the way the D three zone is 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 situated. Um, but the substantive regulations remain the same with certain additions. To make the hotel operator liable for any violations. The concern is that you get an independent operator and of the restaurant for the bar. And they start to go like this as to liability. So, in drafting the law, we made it that the rooftop area must be operated. Or directly leased from the hotel operator. There can't be an independent relationship, you know, they did get a separate operator that lease still must be with the hotel operator. Um, operation of the rooftop area must not negatively impact the use and enjoyment of the neighboring properties. That's a broad subjective standard, uh, but but this board can understand if it is complaint driven, it is an ability to revoke that. Uh, permission, and that's what this is, this is special permission. Use to the rooftop shall not exceed the average consideration for the principal use, meaning the restaurants. But at no event shall the rooftop area be opened and occupied later than eleven o'clock on a Friday and Saturday. And ten o'clock Sunday through Thursday. Same as it is in the D three area. The rooftop must be surrounded by adequate railing or walling, no less than forty-two inches in height, a little higher than the normal, um. Rally. Uh, no amplified, no amplified entertainment, music, speakers, television or public address system shall be placed on the rooftop. So no amplified music. The windows and doors there areas where such noise originates shall be closed at all times. There was a plan to have, uh, garage doors. And we don't want to be in that position where we've had the battle of the music on the river before where people put up. Plastic and other things to say that that's now enclosed, that game is over. Uh, there will, there is no air applied music, if the music is from an enclosed area, that area must be closed. It must be, the doors must be down if they're going to use it, but otherwise no amplified music. Uh, the main access to rooftop, this is really kind of irrelevant for this application, but must be from within the interior space and assets. Because if you have an exterior area going in, you must go through the lobby. Any lighting fixtures shall be dark sky compliant and eliminate glare and must be cut off at any lighting levels at the top of the line and on the roof. Um, the rooftop area lights must be turned off when not in use. Um, and all lighting shall be at or below railing level. So it's supposed to be for intimate dining area where it's a privilege to be outside as opposed to overhead lights, if you look at some other restaurants. That's not what it is, it's supposed to be. Um, prohibited in any rooftop area, and a rooftop will otherwise have to meet all of the other fire prevention codes. Uh, importantly, liability will go both to the. Rooftop operator and or the hotel operator releases or licenses the rooftop establishment. So the hotel has an obligation and an interest to make sure that it is properly, uh, in their their operator, if they're not operating it directly, is in compliance with the law.
So special permit is issued by the planning board.
Uh, in this case, the special permit will be issued by the planning board, yes.
And is it a one-year permit and.
Correct.
Correct. So the applicant would have to go in front of the planning board to renew it, as this happened with the third thing, I think.
Correct, and and you know, that has worked out very well with the D three compliance. Because the rooftop, in all practical purposes, is really only going to be used during summertime. You could get a little bit of shoulder use, but generally during the winter time, no one's going to sit out there in five inches of snow or when it's blowing off the river, as you well know how good that wind gets. You know, it can get cold in a river. So the concept is, if you're going to have a summer that's going to be slightly out of control, say. You're going to be up for another review, because by the planning board, you will have, uh, that expiration of that permit will allow the planning board to take another hard look at that.
In that sense, we have tighter control over this than we do over some of the bars and nightclubs, restaurants along the river from which you're not subject to. The permit, so.
You know, on that point, is there a separation? Between. Music and noise. And services and services and the light.
That's an idea, that's a point, you know.
I'm not sure it's follow her.
Well.
There is going to be some delays with circus.
Yeah, but the complaints, the department are always coming, the music is too loud. Or. Too joyous, might say. But the actual operation itself. Does that get affected? Does that permit, allow both of those things, or are they two separate permits? Is there a permit for music? And entertainment and for, uh, permit to have a restaurant?
So, um, the the restaurant will be permitted by something, by the site plan of the planning board.
Is my question.
And then if they were going to have. They they technically wouldn't need a commercial noise permit because they're not going to be allowed to have amplified music.
Okay.
And that was something that was calculated to not, it's a good clarification, lady pointed that out. It would not be a commercial noise permit because commercial noise permit allows you to have amplified music. This code prohibits any amplified music on the rooftop. So you could have a flute or an oboe or perhaps a mandolin.
Violin.
Violin.
Dulcimer.
But you cannot have those connected to a power amplifier. A dulcimer.
Yes. I guess that was my question.
Yes, yeah, so the other commercial establishment, we have a commercial noise permit, but this rooftop would be ineligible, okay?
Okay, they they can't, they can't show up to that room and say, oh, it's noise, no, commercials, no, I can make money, no.
I guess this wasn't the mayor's point, but this brought to mind something that I would think of, although I think this is a small enough. Enterprise, this wouldn't be the case, but I know those of us that live in proximity of the river, sometimes it's not. The music, it's the din. I mean, but these are places, I'm telling you, that are outside, by the outside, with a tremendous number of patrons, like this, like. Hum, this buzz, like noise of people talking, and it can drive the praise.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's germane to this, because we're talking about a smallish capacity. Um, on the roof, but I mean, it is, I mean. It it is a thing.
Yeah.
You can hear these places, like, you know, it's when you get two hundred fifty or whatever number of people talking at the same time, eh, it's, you know.
So I don't have the site plan in front of me, also something that we thought about, is a very big concern. Some of the other places have, uh, different occupancy calculations for open space and otherwise, that we've had those debates about what is occupancy? And, uh. Being in a closed area and a and a restaurant, both from our standards and the health department's standards, you're going to have an occupancy limit. That limit, it's not limitless. Well, there's going to be ticks set with the liquor authority application, and we will strictly enforce on movement of seats as we do everywhere else.
Right, and you have, people will be allowed to sit up.
I have the site plan, but I don't have it in front of me. It's on, there is a set number. No, no.
Probably looking at a hundred at the most.
Yeah.
But, but. The the, I think your issue is that whatever it is, it's a confined number.
Correct.
It isn't one that can expand beyond that. We have them now with people be expanding on what it is because, oh, you got, you know, but take that wall over there, you got.
That's the problem with outdoor space, if there's no walls, it's like, you know, and it just expands and there's people standing around all over the place, but that's not sort of the case.
Yeah, yeah. Good, very good. Approach.
Tom Bojek, thank you, nice to meet you, hello, everybody. Hello, Jim. I I think there's been a lot of public comment about this, um, issue about the noise possibly coming from the restaurant bar. And most of the public doesn't want it to happen, so this is, I I I think it's very good, prevented. Legislation. I'm actually very surprised that, uh, I was just, I was limited to the, to the music, but you come up with some other. Other issues that also, uh, have come up with the public and need addressing too, so I'm happy to see that. One hundred and seventy-five seats is the, is the bar, is the restaurant.
Okay.
Um, that's, that was the last figure at the planning board meeting, you were there.
Yeah.
Right, so I think that was another. But otherwise, I think this sounds like a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Need a Tommy. You're watching for the work?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm Neil, certainly. Neil, just a little water.
Thank you. Neil, Star-Side Bay Avenue, Patchogue. I think this is the step in the right direction, and I thank you for bringing this to the table. Uh, I want to make sure, we're not talking about just live music, we're talking about recorded music, obviously, no speaker down there.
Right, so, um, I'm glad you did that, I'm glad you clarified that for the record. Uh, and and this will enter into the minutes, it will be crystal clear about it, right? No amplified entertainment, music, speakers, television or public address system shall be permitted on the rooftop. So you're not, don't turn on a DJ and think that's going to do it or anything like that, no amplified music. And again, I was half being facetious, but really not. If you were to have an instrumental guitar up there, perhaps, or the wind might be a competitor, but if you're going to have an instrumental guitar, maybe no one's going to object to that during that time. But at no time will we have amplified music at all.
Thank you, so I think this is a step in the right direction. And many of you know that when I speak, I basically speak a lot about the quality of life issues for, uh, the surrounding neighborhood and that this hotel will impact. Um, this is one of them, and this addresses step one. And my hope is that we will go on to step two and to step three and to step four. And I'd like to make a couple of comments, I know that this is the planning board right now, so you're going to have to tell me where I can go with this. So step two might be something to address this traffic. And unfortunately, it was not addressed at the. Developers representative, I believe it was last Tuesday night at the planning board meeting. That was a dismal presentation. I'm sure some of you saw it, if you weren't here, then I'm sure you saw it on Zoom, but if I was the developer, I'd be embarrassed for what that engineer brought to the table. It was not only incomplete, it was incorrect. As opposed to Suffolk County Planning Commission, which I think they do it correctly, is they take into effect cumulative effect of many, many things in the area. Two things that were omitted from their planning, uh, from their traffic plan was school bus, I think Ava brought that up. The second thing that it didn't bring in was all the bus traffic from the bus station right there on Division. Major, major issues that are going on with that link this, you add these factors, that's going to make that intersection unpassable. We also have the development right across the street that's basically not been doing anything for a long time. Add those apartments to that, and the new Kelly development that's going to happen down in Mulford. And the restaurants in the area, they're all going to funnel through to that intersection. Taking into effect that now people from Cedar are now using Amity on the pass-through because they don't want to drive past that bus terminal because it's such a nightmare. Add all that, and that's the cumulative effect that, in my opinion, will not be solvable. There was an idea thrown out there about making a left-hand turn lane as you're heading up, uh, west. To go, uh, west on Division. Because the gates will be down, well, I was driving west on Division today, uh, the gates are down. The Ryder Avenue gate was closed also, and Mr. Bojack brought this up, I think, at the meeting. That area is going to be a nightmare. And besides taking that one phone, because that was the only solution that we've seen. Taking that funneling down to River. You're going to take that traffic now past an elementary school, and I know some of you have driven up that road past that elementary school during drop-off and pickup. It's crazy, the kids are there, it's very narrow, people are parked on both sides of the road, that is a disaster waiting to be at, to happen there. And these are things that I'm glad that you're being proactive. We need to plan for the worst and not hope for the best. So these little things that are going out there, the developer doesn't care about. Uh, you know how I feel, I mean, don't, no disrespect to them, looks like they're going to put up a great building, but they don't care about Patchogue. They care about making their money, and none of them live here, so they're not going to be stuck in this traffic. If they can't go to west, they can't go to river, you know, South Ocean is going to be a nightmare, this traffic is going to. I'm looking for the right word, be extremely detrimental to that whole entire neighborhood. And I know that the developer had the nerve, had the audacity. To want this to go to vote after last Tuesday night's meeting, after that disastrous presentation said, give me a yes vote. These situations need to be cleared and decided upon before that yes vote happens. We, this is not a wait-and-see situation, this is a solved now.
Understood.
Thank you, pass that, give me, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
The other situation, of course, is parking, we've talked about that, we know that the overflow parking may go to the railroad, uh, uh, parking lot. It's possible, but again, my concern is, is that the cumulative effect of all the parking throughout the rooms, the apartments, we talked about a hundred seventy-five people on the roof. We talked about, we haven't really talked about it, the restaurant inside, the events center. I have not seen a maximum number of people in this building. Not, I'm sorry, in the hotel, how many people are going to be in that hotel at one time? The maids, the hostesses, the bartenders for two restaurants and an event center, the meeting rooms, a spa. What is the maximum occupancy of that whole entire space? Patrons and employees. So the amount of parking that we have there, as said by Mr. Kaufman in the Suffolk County Planning Commission during the zoning hearing, is obviously grossly inadequate. So we need to look at that, and we need to realize that when somebody's going to be going into that parking lot and they can't find a parking space. Naturally, they're going to pull out onto west and they're going to make a right. Down west. Because most of them aren't going to know that they can park in the railroad parking lot. Or what happens when we return fully from COVID in four, or five, or six, or seven years from now? And that railroad avenue parking lot is full again? What's going to happen? These are solutions that need to be had now. Before that gavel's put down, and I was hoping that our planning commission liaison would be here because I'd be looking in this direction. These are things that need to be cited now before a yes vote is given, so step one, you did it. Step two, traffic's got to be solved, step three, parking's got to be solved, step four, construction traffic's got to be solved. I mean, I know there's a woman that lives just on the other side of the ferry. A construction, some construction traffic went down from the apartments and took down. Her electric line or her communication line to her house, so these construction traffic vehicles cannot be allowed into this. Let's protect that residential area. You're the only ones that can do it, the builder doesn't care. Thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments to drop? Like the move that we approved, the local law was presented to us.
Definitely.
Thank you. She's not here, yes, she is, she is, or he is.
Hi.
Very good, good evening, everyone, very brief report today from the business improvement district, some special projects going on. Uh, first with the business improvement district, our next, uh, meeting of the business improvement district is Tuesday, July the eighth, and you know, I just want. Uh, I know we had trustee Weeks come to our annual meeting, it was welcome, because he's a member of the bid, is a.
Well-run meeting, rocks the conversation, lots of, you know, a little bit of friendly debate, good meeting.
Yeah, and I always, you know, any, uh, villa trustee would always be welcome as a guest to come to our meeting, and obviously we have. Uh, our liaison there, but I would always welcome any of you trustees to come and join us and then catch up with us. Um, and then, you know, just, uh, our bid is very, uh, excited, uh, very happy about the results so far of our farmers market. We're in our third week now, uh, crowds have been very healthy, uh, and the the number of vendors has been great, the quality of vendors has been great. Uh, the Long Island Band had stopped by to do a follow-up story yesterday and, uh. Uh, uh, awareness is continuing to grow about it, very excited on that. Um, and you know, uh, I, uh, have the pleasure of my position to be sitting on now the downtown. Uh, Suffolk County's Downtown Revitalization Committee that expels funds, we do have a grant in for Waverly Avenue project. Uh, get some street lighting over there, uh, so we'll be meeting with them on July the twenty-second. As the the grant goes through the process and fingers crossed that we're going to be awarded that grant. Uh, Ballfield has been a huge success, uh, we've got a record number of leagues playing now, uh. Uh, and the demand continues to grow as Maria, uh, parks his talent made, uh, and so far, so good. Uh, lights are great, but they're not, uh, going out, uh, beyond the borders of the ball field. Uh, and other than some minor noise things, we've been able to address with the leagues as they've come up, uh, so far, the season's running really smooth. Uh, and on some C D A and some of our block grant funding, uh, some of those projects are underway, you might have noticed this past week on South Ocean Avenue. Uh, the curb cuts that were going to, uh, make, uh, the accessibility on South Ocean Avenue that much better, and they've completed that. And then the theater walkway arch, you know, we ran into a minor hiccup with finding a, uh, a sub-level, uh, foundation that they had to work around. Uh, so you will, I think there is a change order, uh, dealing with some of the work that's going to continue on that, uh, there was an adder's cost. That I know was on the agenda tonight, and we appreciate that approval, that'll move that forward the week following July the, uh, fourth. Uh, I anticipate that week is when you'll finally see it go up. And I'm sure we'll do a dedication ceremony beyond that. Uh, and then just to let people know, uh, you know, this board, uh, did, uh, vote a few months ago to. Enter a partnership with Seats Up for an oyster program, it's an educational program that also could lend to be, uh. A well to help replenish oysters in in our Patchogue Bay, uh, so the docks are in place, and people go down to Mascot Dock. And they see those fences and that little dock in there, that's in preparation of this program, Seats Up is now, uh, investigating, uh. Education of high schools and 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 middle schools, uh, finding classes that'll adopt different baskets, so that'll probably start in the fall when you'll, those thoughts, you know. Um, just, uh, and another thing you might, while we're working on, maybe this fall, uh, everybody might not be aware that at our, uh. Wolfbauer Sports Complex are these two beautiful ponds that have been covered up by fragmites. Uh, so we just had a pre-application meeting with the D E C last week, uh, they were very favorable on the application, so hopefully in the fall. Uh, we're going to have permission to take down those fragmites and, uh, expose, uh, those ponds again to the public, uh, as a nice aesthetic to that area there, so. Um, unless anybody's got any questions to me, but, you know, just want to concur, uh, as this is my first public opportunity, uh, to speak on the passing of Dennis Smith. Obviously, Dennis was a tremendous mentor and a friend, uh, is going to be greatly missed, but, uh. Uh, his stamp, uh, is all over our community, uh, you look at the beautiful facades, uh, just think of, uh, on Main Street. He really implemented this facade program that allowed businesses, uh, over a period of time to change the sides, and certainly that living shoreline on our park. Uh, with which we've gotten so much notice on, and it's still the largest one in New York State as of today. Uh, you know, that was another project in all the parks improvements that Dennis led, so. And I can, well, we can spend hours talking about all the things Dennis did, but, uh. A tremendous loss, but certainly an amazing individual did a lot of great things for Patchogue, so. And if somebody's got any questions for me, thank you very much.
Heather Cox.
Monday, everyone. Apologies for the sunburns.
That'll be good.
So it's super short today, um, is upcoming Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, we have a grand opening, or reopening, rather, for Horizon over on Main Street, right back at H R D. Thursday, I know we're all anticipating, start of Alive After Five. You guys are nervous, but I'm just a touch, but it should go off without a hitch. Uh, we did make a bunch of improvements that we're hoping will change the outlook of Alive After Five going forward. And then July thirtieth, we have Christmas in July, um, it's kind of like a pre-party for It's a Wonderful Life, which will happen in December. It'll be held at Blue Point Brewery at five P M, come on down, there's just going to be music and raffles and all that kind of good stuff. Obviously, August eighth, we're going to have our circus on Main, and then September sixth will be our St. Borata Festival. And then hopefully in October, we'll have our Fall Festival, but that date will be announced shortly or soon. Um, aside from that, I think everything is going pretty well on our end for Alive After Five, we're going to start doing some more, um. Musical genres, so if that first night country is your thing, please come, but that third night, I hope that everybody comes, because it's going to be disco. Aside from that, I don't have anything else to report. If you guys have any questions.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Panieri. I have two things on my agenda here. I'd like to request, request approval to accept the resignation of Public Safety Officer Liam Song's effective June first, twenty twenty-five, motion.
Second.
Bye.
Aye. And I have the request approval of a change order, number one, for H two N project number E P B twenty-four oh five for the Patchogue River Waterfront Sewer Project Phase Two. Low-pressure sewer system contract S. Sewers in the amount seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixteen cents for a new contract amount of two million five hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents.
Motion. I'll second it. It sounds like this had to do with an unanticipated bit of extra work down by Brightwood Streets.
Yeah, this um something like that, yeah.
Excavation, shoring, unsable material removal. Okay. You never know what you're gonna find sometimes.
I'll give those details to Tim carefully.
I'll second, so I second that motion.
But I do have to say about the sewer system, incredible job, um how they, how they work. Um even though it's a huge project, the way they, they work on one street at a time and you know, um the communication with all the neighbors is excellent, so.
Yeah, Kristen from Agile, she's excellent. She's been the one who's been maintaining the communication.
Absolutely. The letters, then even the workers here, the communication and everything else, very nice.
But I wanna add on to what trustee Carrillo said. I, I think this project's been going on long enough now that a lot of us are taking this for granted. This is one of the most amazing things that's happened in this community like like ever. I mean, we are so far ahead of everyone else here in Suffolk County, searing as many properties as we can. I'm so happy to be on the sewer line now, and so I mean, enough cannot be said about what partnership between different levels of government and great vendors we've been dealing with to get this work done. Let's hope that we can continue it. So yeah, I'll second that motion.
I also got um correspondence from Supervisor Jim Burbidge from Public Safety. We have did forty-six calls from dispatcher uh for the past two weeks. Two hundred fifty-three parking summonses, eleven uh F A Ts for urination and alcohol. My recommendation to people is don't drink and go to the bathroom before you leave your floor. It's a best advice I give. And uh that's what Supervisor Burbidge said, he's got more um controlled by precinct in downtown, uh to keep that together. Um okay, and that's Jim and Tim. At Howard Department, we got a lot of projects going on there. Uh sewer project is past fifty percent mark and going well. The pool is open. And DPW assisting in getting the grounds ready, including re-topping the wooden deck. Oak maple traffic intersection signals, construction started good. Uh concrete and underground conduit placed. AI con, DE AI contracting, uh concrete replacing handicap ramps on South Ocean, good. Very good. And picking up garbage, tree sewage, and cutting grass. It's springtime, I mean, the village, it's from the fire department. So I wanna thank those guys for all the work they do and uh pick up all the garbage and doing so much more for Village Patchogue. Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh request approval to ratify prior approval for Amvest Post one eleven to hold their annual flag disposal at Shorefront Park on Saturday, June twenty-first at uh A M. Perfect. It was a great event.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, morning. A couple of things. First of all, uh you know, I've, I've been on the bid for twelve years, so I got to work pretty closely with Dennis and very mild-mannered guy, and uh you know, I always say the face of downtown, which David alluded to. But what a lot of people don't recognize is, we got money from the government. But every one of those projects had to be matched by a dollar from the building, from the people who owned the building. So he certainly knew how to pick people's pockets if he didn't do it tonight. And you know, you'd never guess that, you know, you'd never guess it. Uh secondly, uh we will not have a trustee meeting before the Great Fourth of July Parade on the Fourth of July, so everybody should come out and enjoy. And uh thank you for the check. Very successful parade this summer. I've got one thing. Uh request approval for Legacy Softball to use Shorefront Park Mondays from six P M. to eight thirty P M. and Fridays from eight P M. to eleven P M. Starting July twenty-seventh and ending September first. That's a motion.
Second, this is the old ball field, Shorefront Park, Neil, little favor.
Um you have, you have request approval to hire summer staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. That was just one line. Now, now wearing my glasses. Uh request approval to hire summer staff. As presented, we got a little document from Maria about additional summer staff, just a couple of people, as a motion.
I do have a question about this, and there are so many youth that are interested. What is the process for them? I know the process, but I would like to make it more public for everybody, you know, if someone's watching.
She, they, they get a phone call all day long. And bring the kids down. They kind of just, anybody that shows up at the front door.
Yeah.
Yeah, they really do, it just.
It, it's all over the, the website. I was looking at it yesterday, you know. I don't know why I was looking at it. I was looking for a summer job for myself. But uh it's, you know, that all the position, all the positions on the website.
No, I'm saying with the process, just go to the village and fill out an application. Especially for the young, young teens, the sixteen, seventeen-year-old.
They have a, they have a a pretty hard time. Very challenging to fill.
Yeah, but they can just go three-eighty bay, like, you know, in the early spring, that's what Maria starts.
Yeah, they sent out like an email blast around, when it was eight, and I had posted one like in the best of your, I public restrooms, cause of sailing instructors, we have a lot of people that know sail. So yeah, they, they start pretty early looking for folks and uh it's a lot, the hottest theft gets uh hired to make all this stuff happen. And it's all about to start, I think, this coming uh weekend. Sailing begins to begin on Monday, the pool's gonna open. Lot going on. So I'll second that motion, I don't think I have a second yet.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I got uh a few things on my agenda this evening, actually some that are not actually listed, that's none of their loves. We're gonna start with the building and housing report. The fiscal year ended, it was a banner year for building and housing, as it has been in recent years. Uh but first, the revenue report for the month of May, you brought in a total revenue, well, just a little one, of thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the month of May. And the top five sources of revenue, some, some, you know, interesting mixed-ups here. Our friends from the zoning board brought in two thousand nine hundred sixty dollars, that was number five. Another great one for outside cafe permits, number four, three thousand four hundred dollars. Fire inspections, four thousand fifteen dollars. Now I have my fire inspection in my business this week. I spoke to Stephen Armstead and I gave him kudos. Those guys are out there hustling, they do a lot of fire inspections on a regular basis, and most of them are only fifty dollars a pop, so. That's a lot of income. And more importantly, the safety aspects, they give you the recommendations. You have a certain number of time to correct any problems that they see. And it's all, it's all good, cause sometimes things, housekeeping can slip, you know, and you, you know, you lose track of things. Number two, this is rare for this not to be number one source of income, building permits six thousand five hundred eighty dollars, and for the month of May, it was topped by the number one source of income. Rental permits, eight thousand two hundred dollars for a grand total of thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the month of May. That's the last month of fiscal year. Twenty-four, twenty-five. Total revenue for the fiscal year from building and housing, one million eight hundred and five thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. That's a lot of money. Um top five sources of revenue, my friends at the planning board brought in twenty-one thousand seventy-five dollars. The si- safety inspection fees, number four, twenty-two thousand nine fifty-five. Plumbing permits, which has not been in the top five in recent months, but it's strong throughout the year, forty-nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Number two source of revenue for the year, always up there, rental permits brought in seventy-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. And the number one source of revenue for building and housing, not surprisingly, was building permits, which last year brought in one million five hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, that is. One would say the lion's share of the total revenue, and again, one point eight million dollars brought in by building and housing. Kudos to the entire staff, both in the office and in the field. If you ever go down to building an apartment during the day, it's like a din of activity. There's always so much going on down there, so kudos to them. Next on my agenda, I'd like to request, we did this last year, they could do this regularly, I believe. Request approval of a licensing agreement between the Village of Patchogue and Gina Esposito, owner of real property known as twenty-sixth Smith Street. Suffolk County Tax Back number as listed, to allow the use and access of real property owned by other villages known as twenty-eighth Smith Street. Again, the Suffolk County Tax Map number is listed for our use. And this is for the purpose of parking vehicles. It is for an annual fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, and the licensing agreement uh was in your package, so that is a motion.
So thi- this is, we've done this before, this property, it's a ten-year license agreement. This is a creative use that back in history, was on the properties that, if anybody remembers Gosher, Governor's Office, Governor's Office of Sandy Recovery. Gosher took those properties and then said, hey, we'll return it back to the municipality, but we'll list a thousand covenants on it that you can't do anything with this ever again. They didn't want the property to be condemned, knocked down, and then return the property back to construction or otherwise. Which left the municipalities, the local municipalities, struggling with what do you do with these missing teeth in a neighborhood? And the mayor came up with the concept of allowing the next-door neighbor to park on it. But in exchange for certain uh maintenance requirements. They can't put a, can't put a structure on it, but you have to keep it insured, have to keep it grassed, permeable paving, all these things takes the cars off of our roads and onto the sides, the properties are maintained. I think, you know, I, I'm particularly proud of this because I think this is a really good use of these Gosher properties that other municipalities are struggling with as they turn to, they break up the neighborhood because they become almost like abandoned lots, because they're not being planted and they're not being constructed upon. But this is a good use, the neighbor gets to supervise it, it's a modest fee, and then come back every ten years. It does terminate on transfer.
And they were also connected to our parks. So when we manage the parks and clean the parks and mow and do those things, it'll become part of it. So you, you don't see, you don't want to limit hers, unfortunately, they get that in a couple where they're so grown out. Yeah, they become a mess. Then DPW goes there every once in a while, but not as consistently as that was.
But our neighbor really keeps a good, sharp book, as a vested interest, keep that property, I'll say.
I have a question, cause I've been talking to the homeowner, so I envisioned it to be similar to what the other um property on Smith Street, um where they have just defined a single parking space with uh permeable substance and they park one car. Is that the limitation as dictated there, or is there an ability to park more cars?
Depends on the parcel. Uh that was a, that was a unique parcel because they only took half of it, cause the other half was kind of reserved for the other neighbor. I don't know about this particular parcel, I'll have to look at it.
Okay, so she's gonna come in and um probably sign it tomorrow. Um but then her other question was about who's gonna mow it, considering.
This one is no more than, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, cause I have to tell her that, cause you know, she's envisioning using this little tiny area for a car, and then there's a vast lot. And.
She'll be, it'll, it'll be, give it to her in the dimensions of what she has control of. Any part of that, if it's forty feet wide and has two cars or twenty-five feet wide for one car, the remainder of it, we manage, but everything that in that strip, that twenty-five-foot strip of whatever it is, is our responsibility.
So if that's not a detail there, can we get that amended to reflect the exact responsibility of the size of the area, so I just communicate that.
Of course, this particular licensing area with Ms. Esposito limits the number of vehicles that can be parked anytime to four.
Okay.
But I do have a question. There's two houses in between, right? Has the other house shown?
The other house is uh in contract with a new owner, so.
Oh.
Yeah. Preston Waterman is selling, that's the seller, he's a new buyer.
When you're on Smith Street, you have that baking hot, and then you have a home, and he has two cars there. And he manages that property's around. But the other probably forty feet, fifty feet, you do wanna be mowing. So it's, you know.
And cause he has room on the other side too, between himself and the, and the Reitzel house. So right now, he's parking underneath.
He's underneath, yeah. He's pretty tight with the Reitzel house, I think, but there's a lot to the west of him that I think like.
Well, the one to the west of him is the one we're talking.
Well, that is the actual one, right, that?
This is the one, but it's right here.
Gotcha, alright, yeah.
But then they're gonna cut the, I guess, make it for them to be able to park, right?
Yeah, wha- whatever the final decision is based on.
If you want to stay here after that lot, then we can go to after the former Waterman, how's that find you?
This, this lady, but she's gotta mow that half the lot and manage that day. Just get, live in each bed.
What about the curb?
I think it would be ideal for half, instead of four, because uh instead of the whole thing, because it is ten years. Ten whole years that we, after the contract, when if the other neighbor would like half, wouldn't we, wouldn't have that access?
The curb cut, she's gonna put the curb cut in. We talked about whether the sewer project would uh impact the sidewalk there, uh and it will not. So she's gonna have to do that herself.
Oh, she won't do that?
Yeah.
Well, currently, I understand, somebody who's there is not using, has no curb cut and it parked going out with curb bombing.
I think she'll put a curb cut.
There's no mention of curb cut, even a slice. Yeah, cause there's a lot of kids, that's a busy, busy area, a lot of people walking.
Well, but Ryan said it was four, so.
Whatever it is, the property's this big and she's taking this much.
Right.
It goes all the way back.
It goes all the way back, so, okay. So I'll, um, yeah, I'll speak to her tomorrow and explain that and make sure she understands that before she signs. We can talk.
It's a spinning property by
I think it's a pretty good deal.
It is a good deal.
Yeah, just the idea of being able to create an area that's big enough for four cars. Is, you know. I mean, she's single, she lives there alone, so we'll have people over.
The, the motion's been made, but not accepted. Well, the next on my, this is not on my list, I apologize for this. I did send everyone an email, I apologize for late nights, mate. An update on the uh, the Great Patchogue Lake Fish Ladder uh project, those of you who've been following along. There's a series of meetings going back, I don't think quite a year. A New York State grant was received, um Seatup and L K McLean and Associates have been planning and designing and giving us several options to provide a fish ladder uh at the south end of the Great Patchogue Lake, which then drains into the Patchogue River. And quickly, the reason for this is that there's been a, basically, there's a, uh, there's a conduit or a sluice way that goes underneath the road. And it's, it's made out of concrete, and at one point, there's a dam. Three species that are native to the area that their instinct is to spawn upriver in freshwater cannot get there. They run into the dam and that's as far as they can get. This would provide them access to their native spawning grounds in freshwater in Great Patchogue Lake. A number of people that involved this, we had an advisory committee meeting on Tuesday. And basically, at the last meeting, uh county legislator Thorne and Susan Brickman, trustee Brickman agreed that we were down to two choices. Uh the criteria from the villagers' standpoint is this, pretty simple. We wanna maximize the ability of the three species to be able to do the desired effect, which is to spawn in their native spawning grounds upriver in the lake. Number two, we would like to see no uh need to modify uh any existing infrastructure. There's a gas line and the municipal sewer line that runs through that green space promenade that's between the lake and uh County Road nineteen right there. We'd rather not have to move anything around. Uh third, we'd like to see something that has an educational um and visual component whereby the public could actually have a look and see what's going on down there. Uh and perhaps certain times of year, you would actually see some of these species, which would be the eel. I'm sypifying this, there's actually, you know, more generic, more specific name, the eel, the herring, and the river otter are the three species which are trying and the river otter are the three species which are trying to get upstream to spawn. So we'd like to see some sort of a, an educational component. Cost is, of course, a concern. This project is not anticipated to cost village taxpayers a dime. The state grant covers the planning process where we are right now. And the next phase is to get funding for construction implementation. There's actually a lot of money available for these sorts of projects, but the deadline for submitting the application is rapidly approaching. One of them with the county is this coming Friday. And the, the county, everyone needs to know where we as a village are at with this. So Trustee Brickman and I and Legislative Thorn have decided that the best option is so-called Alternative Six. It was actually presented to us at the last meeting, Tuesday. The so-called cool and weird fish passage, which does all the things that we want to see done. No impact infrastructure, all three species can get up into the lake to their native spawning grounds. And there's going to be a, a view shed into the spillway that will allow the public to see what's going on and that opens itself up to the possibility of an educational component. So that's our, our recommendation, and I know the committee is kind of waiting to know here what the village wants to do. So I don't know if this is something that requires an actual resolution, or just, you know, you could give me an email since Trustee Krieger already did, Deputy Mayor, so that he is in favor of this.
But basically, you and Susan are in agreement that six is what.
And Dominic's on board too.
And that's number one. Or two, it's not going to be a cost at this point to the village residents.
That's correct.
The environmental standards, the way to do this.
Absolutely, and again, no, no impact to the gas line or the sewer line, which I think is very important.
Steve had contacted me today and asked me if I would direct a letter of support, and they provided me with an example.
Let's take a vote on it, and from that, we'll talk about the support. You jump ahead.
So ought I to, ought I to make a motion then? I would move that the, the village forward supports for the, the proposed Great Patchogue Lake Fish Passage Project, so-called Alternative Number Six, which is the cool and weird fish, fish passage. And this, I can actually, you know, we can, I can actually turn this in.
Well, I got a question. Trustee Weeks, the third species is an otter?
Yes, and before you say that I'm nuts, I saw a river otter in my Marina Basin a week ago Friday. They do exist. They're, they're coming back in the bay, they're not as plentiful as, as, as some of the other, the eels are everywhere. But they, we, we saw a river otter, there was a woman bringing a sailboat in and she didn't see the river otter, and I'm like, please don't eat the river otter, so, yeah, pretty big river.
I can start trapping again.
I have a second thought.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. And one last thing. Yes, regarding Dennis Smith, and I know that all of Dennis's achievements have been well documented. Marion Russo wrote a terrific piece in the Law and Advance last week. If anyone didn't get a chance to read it, I would encourage you to do so. But what strikes me most about Dennis in the short time I did know him was that he was one of the kindest, gentlest, most humble human beings I've ever met. And Mark Twain has a great quote, because Mark Twain has a lot of great quotes. One of them is endeavor so to live your life that when you die, even the undertaker will be sorry. And that was certainly the case with Dennis Smith. He was a very, he was a great man. He would miss. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I would like to also start with my condolences to the family of Dennis. Dennis was a great man. I, you know, the little time that I, that I knew him, a couple of years, he was incredible, just his kindness, his intelligence, but especially his kindness, his simplicity to life. So he will greatly be missed. We lost another great soul in the village of Patchogue. I have two requests. I would like to request to have the Hispanic Cultural Parade on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-sixth. And a rain date on June, Sunday, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-sixth. Motion?
Second half, okay.
Aye, aye.
The rain date was which?
Twenty.
May?
June, June twenty-eighth.
That's why I thought you said June.
Due to the holidays, Father's Day and Friday parade and everything else. I don't know if they will. But, and my second request, I would like to request for the role of community order. Number one proposal for Patchogue Theater Archway from Spirit Iron Works for assembly and installation of the amount, in the amount of three thousand and sixty-six dollars.
Second.
Aye.
No, thank you, Mary Candy, point about sympathy to Dennis Smith family. Incredible loss again for the legal land marshals and things, wiggling in ranks, but it's been a difficult, certainly difficult year for that. But Dennis was an excellent example to all of us.
People don't realize with Dennis, he took a five-million-dollar grant and turned it into talks for it, and turned it into a nine-million-dollar investment without taking a nickel from the village.
He did his work without fanfare, and it's really a tribute to him that what he got accomplished.
On the main street grants, the main street grants were about a million of worth. While the constructions were worked through the hundreds. And that's what I think Tom was mentioning about, I was able to squeeze money out of people to make things happen. He was just, you know, that would be said. In this business, what I do, what we will do here, we made it, we have a lot of coins, not many friends. Dennis was a good friend.
Okay, you want to comment?
Mark Beagle from gloves, I just lost a mistake about Dennis. My father had back operation in the city. This guy actually drove into the city, picked him up, took him home. He was the best guy and they were best friends and, you know, a great, great person.
Really?
Gonna be missed every time.
You'd miss him every day.
Yeah, me too. I didn't even recognize his wife, because I haven't seen her in a while. She come running up to me and I'll, they're the Lord, who is that? And she's like, oh my God.
Yes.
And I have two questions tonight, Mr. Mayor, or just all okay?
The other phone can be heard.
Thank you.
If you heard, I mean, I had an answer to your question, but.
Name and address?
I'm Chris Bittorio, one oh seven Park Street, in the great village of Patchogue. Just first, I just wanted to wish my condolences to your, about your friend, Dennis Smith. I'm just hearing that, I didn't know about that, just hearing it tonight.
Good enough, Dennis.
Yeah, and Joe, and I missed Joe. That hurts, looking at that empty seat, it really does. But anyway, I'm sorry. I was, this morning, I was walking in the walkway next to the congregational church. And I was, I just got out of my car in the parking lot and I was hearing obscenities being yelled from the front of the church. And there was, there was some trouble going on, obviously, so I walked down the walkway and I see there were these gentlemen in front of the church and yelling, and one of them, I mean, they looked like they were gonna fight each other. I was actually contemplating calling the police because it was getting that bad. One guy was like this, he was yelling and yelling obscenities and he's leaning, lurching towards the, the other guy. Somebody who works in that area, she works in one of the stores there, told me that about a month ago, I, I didn't know about this either. A man was threatened that, by a woman, by a knife point somewhere in that area. I think it was, she said it was near the Capital One Bank. Did you hear?
I heard about this too.
Yeah, I just heard about that. No. She, this, my friend who works in one of the stores, she said that she spoke to you, Mr. Mayor, when you were there. Goldberg's, it was at Goldberg's Bagels. She spoke with you and you told her that there was going to, you were going to have a meeting with the police about this matter. Can you share any, what, was the, was the meeting taking, did the meeting take place and can you share anything with the public?
Just sharing a sense that they're frustrated about the situation, we are frustrated with it, you know. The people that she's speaking of, most of them, when all of a sudden, this is a place to camp out right now.
Yes, sir.
And our responsibility is to make it safe for everybody. So we work with our public safety, one of the things that we do is every morning, the department always goes around the churches and making sure the properties are cleaned. And we do all what you do to protect people. Suffolk County PD, if you get to notice, they're spending more time at the Capital One Plaza than they had before. It comes out of the meeting that we had with the Attorney and a public safety.
Mr. Mayor, how often, I'm sorry, how often are they there, the police? Because I actually, I have to say, I'm not, can't recall seeing them recently.
Over the last week, I've been down, I've gone to Main Street two or three times any day. I come, even when I leave here tonight, I risk waits and then go around and go down Main Street. A half dozen times here.
Okay.
In the last four or five days. And it's typically not one car, it would be two cars that are there, and then confronting the gentleman that are in there and their court general. So it really is a very difficult situation because, and this is reasonable, because as the Constitution allows, to that, to lawyer, I guess, yeah. But, you know, it's, there's not a lot that we can do except move them along and make sure that they don't cause problems.
It's a good thing that the pastor is doing to, having a soup kitchen there and offering showers, I think it's a great thing. But it's also upsetting to some of the people there. This, this, my friend, she also said that she, one time she was walking down Main Street, one of them harassed her, they called her names. They wanted, wanted some money and when she didn't give it to him, called her names and stuff.
Chris, I, I would urge anyone you talk to, if you, if you see those kind of situations, to call nine-one-one. Because that call volume, even though it seems like you're pestering them with minor concerns, that call volume ramps up the issues of what's happening and gets it on record. Because when the mayor goes to the precinct and they say, hey, look, this is the first we're hearing of this. You know, when they get nine-one-one calls on a volume, I know people, we're, we're taught as kids not to call nine-one-one, you know, hassle them with those kind of things. But you're getting to the point where people are feeling unsafe and insecure or harassment or aggressive panhandling and those kind of things. Definitely call, or look at there's a disturbance that's happening, like you witnessed, call nine-one-one, report it to the police officer.
And, and there's another woman that works at Goldberg's, my friend told me that she was harassed at the laundromat, she was with the kids over at the laundromat. And when the, the gentleman asked for money, she refused, he says, oh, I know you work over Goldberg's. That really gets to me when they start threatening.
Yeah, you know.
That's, I draw a line there, we have to draw a line. I feel sorry for these people, but we have to draw a line when they start threatening the public.
We had discretion at our mission, you know, too, but, but, you know, how do we manage it? How do we make it safe?
It's a tough job. No, I understand, it's not easy.
Wish I had an easier race about the water.
I'd make the soup kitchen closed.
Yeah, that's correct. They're not doing that at the current gas church. Shower in the, down in St. Paul's now.
It's just for showering and?
Shower is not there anymore. It's at St. Paul's Patchogue on Monday.
You know, St. Paul's, St. Paul's is down the end there, on Ryder, out of the way, not right down the middle of town, the village.
So the soup kitchen is there now?
The soup, this, that is the primary soup kitchen downtown there.
So why were they in front of the congregational church then, is it? Yeah, it's got that.
If I, if I just bring one comment is that Facebook is not the place to call or to post.
I don't even do Facebook.
Well, you know, the Patchogue sites and everything, and people report crimes on Facebook.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's not the place to report it, but if you see something happening, call police, call something, call the. Call village code, call somebody, but just don't go home and post it on Facebook and say, there was this incident.
I think people are so used to being harassed maybe, I mean, if it's something where they get assaulted, physically assaulted, then they're gonna do something. But especially maybe with women, I don't know, they just feel, maybe they're kind of used to it, I don't know, because the men are just, they just. And they don't think to maybe call nine-one-one, so I, that's a good suggestion.
You, you have to, we have to, you have to build up a list of complaints.
Yeah, that's right.
PG, Suffolk County PD, we're very lucky here in the village, they do a wonderful job of us. But they react to problems. They're not at the, necessarily looking for them, but they react to them. They hit comment, but making the phone calls around the one. See, all the time, really, it's. It's distressing to see that, you know, it's like, and then somebody will say, well, did you call the police? No, I didn't call the police, they don't come anyway. You know, that's a, that's a, that's an ignorant thought, you know, the police always come.
Well, she said, well, my friend said that the, the police, I, I assumed they were called, I don't know if she called the, but she said the police don't do anything, that because they just don't want to touch them, they don't want to be bothered with them, whatever. Now, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's true, that's maybe her opinion, I don't know what, that's a backdoor. Or her opinion, I don't know, but.
But, you know, it's a matter of just keeping vigilant.
Do we still have the car on Main Street, the police car?
I see that, yeah, on the, on the.
By the way, an officer has to see something.
So maybe you just go.
Absolutely, yeah, that's.
Or the person has to be there to point out the perpetrator.
Yeah.
The police officer can't, can't think unless they see something.
Otherwise it's TSA.
Or someone has some, you know.
Yeah.
But we do, we do have the aggressive panhandling.
Yeah, we do.
That's true, yeah.
But they're so glad to see it.
Oh, you reminded me of that, that's true. My second question was, it's a follow-up from a question I had, I had asked you, Mr. Mayor, in February about the sewer expansion, possibly if we can get the sewers expanded down to Bay Avenue. You said you were going to speak to County Executive Romaine about that.
We're on a list now. And I sit on, he's got, he's got a committee put together for looking at sewer projects. And I sit on that committee and I'm asking my ten million dollars, so we'll see if we can get it. And, and we just got a notification, the state has, it's a billion dollars, I think it is, for sewer projects. I just found a little piece.
We could come up on our street there, we know the little piece. I'm getting selfish. We get everybody, as many people as we should.
Then we work.
Yeah.
We're getting closer.
Yeah, getting close, not close enough though. Gotta get a little closer.
Importantly, I guess, I heard Adam Romaine speaking, the massive beach thing, it costs two hundred million dollars.
The Ford River Plant?
Yeah, and, and you need eight acres and you need someplace for the stuff to go.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be a lot more expansion of existing, of the, how many, we got a half a dozen or something like that, Suffolk County. And we're not gonna get a whole lot of new ones, okay? So, you know, we're, we're a great location for, we got some big brownfield stuff over there that nobody wants to do anything with, so. Will be expanded.
What's a brownfield, I'm sorry?
A brownfield is contaminated ground that costs twenty-five million dollars to do anything with.
Wow.
Contaminated by oil and chemicals and, you know, the generations before mine.
Little generation?
They were.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Very good. Motion to adjourn.